Sorry. Camden County Board of Elections and Registration Regular Board Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin our opening ceremonies. We will have the invocation, which will be delivered by Mr. Joseph Stell, and after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Ray Holland.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time that we can come together to serve you and to serve the citizens of Camden County. Lord, we ask for your guidance on us and that we will do everything within our power to ensure a safe and just election process. Lord, I pray that you will bless the board members, the staff, and others who are so actively involved in this process. In your son's holy and precious name, amen.
Amen.
Want me to say in the pledge? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May I have your seat?
Sorry, that was me.
We'll now go to item B for our roll call. We'll do a roll call of all our members of the board. When I call your name and district, if you will, please acknowledge by raising your hand and saying present or here. Robin Maynard Knight, Chair, District One, present. Ms. Clara Harden, Member, District Two, present. Mr. Joseph Stell, Member, District Three, here. Dr. Julia McCullough, Vice Chair, District Four, is absent. Ray Holland, Member, District Five, present. All right. Moving on to item C, adoption of agenda. At this time, we, I do believe that we need to make an amendment to the agenda.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda by adding another new business item, H3, which will be a discussion concerning polling location for the runoff election.
It has been motioned by Mr. Joseph Stell to make an amendment to the existing agenda by adding item number three to under new business in section H. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. It's been motioned in second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? No opposes, okay. Moving on to approval of minutes for May 15, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the last meeting's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, that the last minutes be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? No opposes, approved. On to item E, which are public comments, and this is for agenda items only. We do ask that if there are any public comments, that you please keep them at a minimum of three minutes, please. Being there aren't any, we will move on to item F, financials. May, month, and report from our election supervisor, please, Ms. Shannon.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for being here today. I've presented in your binders the May budget for, May financial report for ending May 31. We are still at about 79% of our 24, 25 fiscal year budget. A few overages to note. I'm checking on the cellphone charges because really, we're almost over twice, twice what we budgeted for that. So I am checking on that to see maybe if we got mischarged for something. It's only supposed to be about $125 a month for all three cellphones that the Elections Office has. Advertising and publishing, we're just well over for additional ads that were made in a different rate that was being charged via the Tribune that wasn't initially known at the beginning when this budget was made. And I think another big item is that travel on page, top of page two, shows like whatever that is, five, 600%, 600%. Some of that was supposed to be charged to education and training, two lines below that. We'd be fine if, if that was put in the correct location. I am checking also, moving down a little bit in supplies, on the janitorial supplies. We did pick up the annex since planning has moved out of there, so we do that expense on our own now, so that might be part of those additional janitorial supplies. And I've asked for a report, moving down a little bit further on other supplies and small equipment, just so I can verify what those charges were exactly for the entire year. But overall, still, we are under budget at just under 79%. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item G, Election Supervisor Update. Ms. Shannon Edels, please.
Sure. I just would like to talk about, I guess, the numbers from early voting. Dennis and Rock are also going to talk about Election Day numbers as well. Overall, I think we had 888 voters for the entire three weeks plus the Election Day, so a fairly low turnout, however, that was kind of par for the course across the state most of the time, and I don't know how exactly it ended up. Dennis might have this percentage, but we had more voters per our active voters than the majority of counties around us. So we did have a better turnout than a lot of other counties in the state. And I'll let Dennis talk for a minute. Is this where you want to go over a little bit of your report?
So, if you'll notice, I handed you a two-page report on the turnout here. Well, actually, before we start on that, I'll start on reconciliation. I know that's a hot topic that a lot of people, that likes to be covered. So regarding reconciliation, we have completed preliminary reconciliation on this election, and I can tell you that based on the sources that we have access to, that we are 100% reconciled, and that every name, this is such a small election, that every name can match perfectly to how they voted, what precinct they voted at, and what method they used to vote. So there are 888 total voters. We had about an even 50-50 split on advance voting and on Election Day voting. And then additionally, we had a further 43 voters that received an absentee by mail ballot. I used the voter participation history report, and I cross-checked that against the statement of votes cast, which is included in your blue folder, to yield a 100% match to the methods and precincts of the reported outcome of this election. So that being said, we're 100% reconciled on this given election. We know that our results match what we reported. That being said, now I'll move over to the report that I handed you earlier before this meeting started. So this is a question I believe Mr. Stell brought forward, added to the agenda at a later time, item number H3. So this is just a preliminary report about the specifics of the turnout. So as you know, that we're looking into an Act and Code, Section 21-2-270, which I will leave your explanation at a later time. However, part of that code states, which is on page two, that fewer than 1% of the county's registered voters voted at the primary of the political party by which a candidate or candidates are to be nominated at the runoff primary. So, looking at those numbers, for the runoff primary, we are anticipating that after all counties have certified, we will have a Democratic runoff primary for the special primary for the Public Service Commission. We had a total of 404 voters request a Democratic ballot and vote that ballot, which makes for .88% of our total registered voters. That being said, it is the opinion of the election staff that Camden County does meet the threshold for the qualifications of Georgia Code 21-2-270.
Thank you, Dennis. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that a little bit later on. I wanted to give a few comments from poll workers, and then I'll let, do you have anything to add? Right, you have some stuff? Yeah. I have a few things I just want to add. We, I sent out, our poll workers were great. This early voting time, three weeks of early voting and Election Day, many were trying to find some busy work to do because it was so slow, and they handled that well, and we appreciate them. And I just want to read you some comments from some of the poll workers. We thank them in an email for all their hard work and dedication to the voters of Camden County. And here's a couple of their replies back to us. One of the poll workers said, "Our team always makes us proud of the election integrity here in Camden County." Another gentleman said, "You are welcome. With the constructive criticism, the regular pop quizzes, and consistently positive reinforcement, we are fortunate as poll workers to have all of you as mentors. God bless and see you at the runoff." Another lady said, "Thank you for your staff, for such a great leadership." For such great leadership. Another lady said, "Is my honor and pleasure to serve as a poll worker. I thank all of this awesome staff for teaching us, for your patience and for your kindness. I've met a lot of great fellow Camdenites." Let's see, I had another good one I wanted to read. This one. "Working with such amazing people reminds me once again how lucky we were to settle in Camden County." This is a newer poll worker who hasn't been in the area too, too long. So that's awesome. Another lady said, "I enjoy working for you all. It takes a team to accomplish what's required of us. Thank you for the opportunity." Thank you. "We pray God continues to bless Camden County poll workers and your office staff. Thanks again for your support and kind words." And Mr., well, I won't say a name. I had another gentleman say it was an honor to serve as a poll worker. And then another lady said, "It was truly my pleasure." So I just wanted to give you feedback. We have some amazing poll workers that work with us on election days and during early voting, and that's something I don't want to take for granted because without them and what they provide, their services to us and to the voters, the four of us right here wouldn't be able to do our job. So just a special shout out to the poll workers who were there. And I will let Mr. Rock give some additional numbers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Also, I'd like to thank our poll workers as well because they show up, they take the constructive criticism to heart, and they want to do a good job. And they pass the pop quizzes most of the time. However, when they do not, they do take that information to do a better job the next time. So they do not look at it as brow-beating, but they look at it as a continuous learning, since it is a little bit of time from training to the actual advance voting, and where they have to, you know, put the rubber to the road, okay? Alrighty. In terms of numbers, because of our very low turnout, we'd like to propose our advanced voting hours of nine to five from July the 7th through the 11th at the annex. Also, that would ensure that the South End voters will have the opportunity to participate because on Election Day, we were hoping to have the one polling place open here in Woodbine. Okay? That's all I have.
Do you want to say how many early voters we had versus the Election Day? Do you have that number?
Early voters were 423.
Had 45 absentee ballots?
Forty-five absentee ballots that came in. We actually received two more today, but they had to be rejected because the deadline is seven o'clock on Election Day. And of the 45 that actually went up, we had 43 that came in, so we only missed those two.
All right, thank you, Rock. And I just have a couple more comments to share. Our highest poll location, I thought this was pretty interesting because it never usually happens like that. Percentage-wise, though, with the active voter count for our voters, and this includes Election Day advance voting and any absentee by mail ballots, but our highest turnout was Waverly's Precinct. Mr. Vernon, that's our amazing poll manager sitting in the audience with us today. He manages that poll. And we did have a few concerns at that polling location. That polling location was getting a new parking lot paved right in the front where the voters would come in. And we were not aware of that situation until the day before the poll actually was to be opened, when Mr. Vernon went over there to set up, and we had also heard from a staff member at the, or the pastor of the church. But he was able, Mr. Vernon was able to figure out a way that we could make sure safely to get voters into the precinct, or into the polling place, and our handicap accessible access ended up being in the back of the location instead of in the front where it usually is. And again, Mr. Vernon Higgins was responsible for making sure that happened as well. But that, that polling location did have the highest turnout. They, they have 1,875 voters registered there, and a total of 73 voted over the course of early voting, Election Day, and absentee by mail. And while that's not a lot, neither is their, their count for registered voters at that, that precinct area, okay? The next highest, which is no surprise, was West St. Mary's. They always have a great turnout, and in comparison, they have 3,500 voters in their precinct, and of their 3,500, they had 131 turn out to vote, so it's 3.7%. Our lowest polling location, and this is usually always the case also, we have almost 2,900 people that are registered at the North St. Mary's precinct. Of that, 36 people voted for a 1.24% turnout. So I just thought those were interesting numbers and wanted to share them with you. Okay. I think that's all I have for my election supervisor report, but we can move on to the next item.
That's it? So you want to go on to the new business?
Yes, yes, please.
Well, before we go on to the new business, I do want to thank you all for everything that you do, Ms. Shannon, Mr. Rock, Dennis, Ms. Leona. Thank you, Mr. Vernon, for being quick on your feet with thinking and making sure that things run smoothly. We appreciate you, appreciate everything you do. Alrighty, so we're going to go on to our new business, which is the pre-certification of the June 17, 2025 special primary. Ms. Shannon?
So we have no provisional ballots. We had obviously no UACVA ballots for this election, so there is no need for us to adjudicate any provisional ballots or to adjourn the meeting to process those. So we can go right into the certification of the June 17, 2025 special primary, and all votes, we believe, were cast, and our numbers were exact match. We didn't have any issues. We had 888 voters turnout. That is what our voting registration system shows as well. So we'd like to request that this election be certified by our board.
Can I get a motion to accept or approve the certification of the special primary?
So moved.
Take it.
All right, it has been moved in second that the election of June 17, 2025 be certified. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? All right, it is approved. And if you all give us a few minutes as we do our signatures.
Yes, thank you.
Mine's red.
What color do you have these in? Is that black? Thank you. All right, so we're going on to item H, which is new item to discuss on item three. Please, Ms. Shannon?
Yes, ma'am. So thank you all for certifying the election, we appreciate that. We did add a new number H3 to our new business, and the, the staff would like to request that the board approve a single polling location for the July 15 runoff. This is a code in our book that the Secretary of State's office has reached out to us about to let those counties know that had under 1% of the, of the runoff voters actually turn out in their county, and we did. You heard Dennis say earlier, we had .88 is what it rounded up to percent of Democratic ballots that were selected in the primary, okay? So that was 404 people. If you didn't vote in the primary election or, or you voted the Democratic ballot, that's the only two groups of people that can vote in the runoff election. So if you voted a Republican ballot in the Election Day, the primary, you won't be able to partake in this runoff election, which makes sense. So we expect still probably around 400 people at the most would be what we would be looking for on Election Day. The law allows for us to provide one polling location in the precinct where the county courthouse is located. Our county courthouse obviously is right here in, in Woodbine, the precinct, where those, the voters of Woodbine precinct vote, at the Woodbine First Baptist Church. That church has agreed to allow us to be there for July 15 again for a runoff. We have also provided the code and the guidance to our attorney and to our county administrator, and we have the full support of our county administrator and the board and the attorney to move forward with just one polling location. Now that would just be on Election Day. We're still mandated to have a minimum of five days of early voting for a runoff election because it takes time to turn around a new ballot, a new project. We have to do logic and accuracy testing again. So those things take time. We have to set staff, have a precinct open, an early voting precinct open. We would like to utilize the Kingsland Annex, the Camden County Annex located in Kingsland. We think that will help offset those voters coming from the southern end of the county in Kingsland and St. Mary's. They could vote early there at the annex, or they can wait until Election Day and vote in Woodbine, especially maybe if they live on the northern part of the county lines. So we'd like to request that the board approve the utilization of just one poll on Election Day. I did provide you with a little summary of the code, the savings, that this would provide a minimum of a $10,000 savings by opening just one polling location. And I think if we're open for five days in Kingsland, that those six days would be sufficient for the number of individuals that we had previously. Nine to five are the hours that are required by the state, and that's what we'd like to open the annex for. So if I could get maybe someone to make a motion on, or if you have any questions for me before you make a motion regarding this scenario with the, with the code, we're happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for any board members?
I know this isn't here, but I think that, is it possible for us to hear from our constituents before we go to the motion?
Does anyone from the public have anything to ask in regards to the potential change?
I appreciate the cost savings at Mary Beckman Precinct, District Three, Julia McCullough's district. I appreciate the cost savings, and I know that runoffs are always challenging, but if you only have early voting from nine to five, on only weekdays, that means that you're making it really difficult for people who work, especially people who work outside of the county. And so I wonder if you could take the savings that you get by having only one polling location open on Election Day and extend early voting into the evening hours for just one of the five days.
Dr. Beckman, for you, what, what are your suggestions as far as extension to? What timeframe are you saying?
Well, I mean, the, you, you can extend it to, from seven to seven, right? And so if you, if you start at nine, which is when you have to start it by, and have it until seven, say on Thursday or Wednesday or something, then, then that would give people who work outside of the county one day at least besides Election Day to try to get back and, and vote, yeah.
Shannon, did you say it was six days? So is there a Saturday day?
No, five days.
It's only five, my little Friday?
I did say six earlier, but that included Election Day, so five days of early and then Election Day, which is seven to seven. We looked at the numbers for those voters that, because our polls were open at 8:30. We looked at our numbers from 8:30 to nine o'clock. I get hourly updates from each staff member. While there were a couple of voters that voted in the 8:30 to 9:00 a.m. timeframe, it was very few. I mean, it, there were days they went to 10 o'clock before we first saw our first voter during early voting. And granted, we were open for three weeks. That's why we opted for the 9 a.m. and to the 5 p.m. I, you know, that...
Let me just reiterate. We're not asking that you start earlier, but rather that, you know, you, go ahead, start at nine, but extend at the end of... at nine, but extend at the end of the business day so that people who work nine to five or eight to five, as many people do, still have time to get back to Camden County and vote in the evening for just one day.
And I know Dr. Beckman is talking about having time to come back to vote, but I think it's a state law in Georgia that your employer and not, this isn't for people who work in Florida. I don't know what the law is there, but I believe that they have to be given time off to be able to, to go and cast their ballot, so.
But isn't that only on the day of the election? That's not for early voting, I don't believe.
I'm not, I'm not sure, actually. That's a good point. I'm not, I'm not 100% positive on that.
Because Dr. Beckman does have a valid point. So is it feasible to do that or to add a date one Saturday, that Saturday of that week? But she's correct for the people who work and, and if they work out of town, not being able to get back in time. And it's already a low turnout, so we don't want to do anything to lure the number of voters in the county.
Saturday is not an option because I can't confirm that we could technically do a Saturday at this point. It would have to be the Saturday prior to the Monday that we're going to start, and we don't know that we'll have our machines and equipment ready by that point. So we definitely couldn't start until the seventh. And you can't have early voting on the Saturday prior to election Tuesday. It, I mean, I guess it would be possible to do a later, a later hour. I wouldn't go to seven o'clock, though. I'm going to have people sitting there doing nothing until seven o'clock.
And we only need to do it one day.
Yeah.
Your suggestion was just one day.
Yeah.
So we don't need to do it every day.
Yeah. The part that we don't like about doing just one day is that messages, like, people get confused in the messages, you know, they don't know what day we're open till si-, oh, I thought you were open till six. Well, yeah, but just on whatever, Thursday. But, you know, that's, that is a board decision. Staff recommendation was nine to five, Monday through Friday. We can make it happen. I mean, I can keep the staff there an extra hour. I wouldn't really go past six o'clock, though.
Any more suggestions? Any more discussion?
Madam Chair, I, I think that's a great suggestion is, and I understand completely of people trying to work. And, and I'm not certain, I think it's only on election day that the employer has to allow voting to happen with their employees. So I would, I would recommend and, and board can take into consideration to, you know, I think six o'clock for each evening is not a big stretch to add to that. And it's not going to cost, because it's, it's going to be very minimal cost into that $10,000 saving.
Is that a motion?
It was just a suggestion. Okay. Anybody have any more suggestions or did you have anything else? Before we move forward. Okay.
Can, can I say one more thing?
Yes, you can.
So I think Mr. Holland's saying nine to six every day. And, I mean, that could work as well. I think one day late is sufficient. I just, we don't see turnout after five o'clock, really, unless it's maybe 5:45 or something, six o'clock. But by, you know, by then we have packed up. So I can't say with certainty how many people show up late, late, late in the afternoon to vote. And the early voting times need to be a different motion than the H3, okay? So I just want to make sure y'all are keeping those two things separate. Generally, in the past, we've provided the staff suggestion for advance voting, and that hasn't been voted on by the board. But we definitely do need a vote on the, just the one poll.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move to, to accept the one polling position for the early voting for the, which would be the annex.
No, she is, the, the one polling position is for the runoff date of?
Woodbine First Baptist Church.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes. For the Woodbine First Baptist.
I would start over to, so it could be-
So, yeah, I, I move to, to make the Woodbine Baptist Church the early voting location and the only, the single location.
No, it's election day.
No, okay. Early voting is-
Early voting's going to be at the end there.
Annex, the one election is going to be here for the election day. Okay. Understand that, okay? So I will amend my motion to say that the early voting is going to be at the annex and on election day will be here in Woodbine.
Can I get a second?
I'm sorry, but isn't that two motions? Because H3 is only election day voting location, correct?
So I would, I would just go with that H3 motion to, to open one polling place for election day on July the 15th to be that Woodbine First Baptist Church, which is mandated. Then you could always make a second motion for the advance voting days.
Okay. So you need to, he really needs to do it over again because then he include the, the advan-, the advance voting as well, right?
Right. If he just says, I want to amend my motion, Jim.
Yeah, I'm going to amend it to just the, on July 15th here in Woodbine.
Okay.
The single location.
Second.
It has been motion and second that the location site for election day, July 15th, be held at the Woodbine First Baptist Church. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? No opposes? All right. So we need to move on to do the advance? Okay. All right. So we need to want to make a motion and then as far as that as well. And that needs to include the timeframe also.
All right. I'll move to, for the early voting to be at the annex from nine to six, Monday through Friday.
Second. All right. It has been motion and second that advance voting for the July 15 election be nine to six, Monday through Friday, at the annex in Kingsland, Georgia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? So approved. Moving on to item I, important upcoming dates. Ms. Harton, do you mind reading those for us, please?
Not at all. Important upcoming dates. Public Service Commissioner Risk Limiting Audit will take place on Thursday, June 26, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The B O E R Work Session will occur on next Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. The Independence Day Holiday will be celebrated on Friday, July 4, 2025. Advance in-person voting for PSE runoff, if needed, will be at the annex, July 7 through the 11th of 2025. And the Public Service Commissioners runoff election, if needed, will occur on Tuesday, July 15, 2025.
Do we have any questions in regards to the important upcoming dates or anybody? Have any comments?
Yes, ma'am. One, one question on item number two, the work session. Did we set a definitive location?
Oh, that's right. I think we talked about Kingsland and-
At the annex.
Yeah, the annex or here. And that might tie into what I was going to say about number one. I don't know if I'll have any board members present, but you're always welcome to come to the risk limiting audit. We have two teams of two people. Right now, I have two poll workers that will assist us as one of the team members for each of the teams. So I do tend to like to get another two board members to be on the audit team or at a minimum to be present during the audit to see how that works. So you might not want to come to Woodbine at nine and then come back at three. But I would, I would invite you all to attend and, and ask that you let me know who will be available to sit on an audit team if anybody is, that'd be appreciated. If not, I reach out to others to try to find those other two people. The annex is available for the work session, and that's fine with me. It's whatever you all would like to do.
Now, Ms. Shannon, do you foresee it being conflicting with time since that is the audit that day? Would it be better, you know?
I, I mean, I don't think that the audit, even if the dice roll that they do, the state election or the Secretary of State's office does, they do a, a dice roll to determine a random selection of what ballots from which precinct that we will audit. Even if they did our largest precinct, which is early voting precinct at the annex, and that's 400-plus ballots, I still don't think it will, just from previous experience. And I believe everyone else can back me up on this. It's not going to take us three hours to do the audit for, for that particular, whatever race they give us, which I'm assuming it's going to be the runoff race. I don't think it'll take us more than three hours. But if that's too much in one day, we can always reschedule the work session for a different day. So that's up to you all.
No, what I was saying was, would it make sense, since everything is going to be done here for the audit? That's, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but for the audit, would it be convenient for us just to come here and downstairs versus at the annex? That's just my question. But you're saying it's not going to run over, so it shouldn't be a problem?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think y'all will be here all day if you come at nine o'clock. And then you'd kind of have to hang out and wait until the three o'clock work session. So it is entirely up to you all. We can meet in a less formal setting at the annex or downstairs in the conference room, in our little elections conference room. But you've got one event at nine o'clock in the historic courtroom that won't take more than three hours, and then another event at three o'clock. Now, you could change the time of the work session if you wanted to do that. We're open to any and all of those.
And make note this is open for the public as well.
Yes.
As everybody knows. So this sounds like something we need to discuss as far as location and if we want to change the time.
I'm happy with the annex at three o'clock.
But either place works for me, so I can do the annex at three.
Do we need to make a motion for that or it's, okay, all right. So the work session on June 26 will be at the annex at 3:00 p.m., as stated. Okay. All right. Moving right along to item J of the agenda, additional public comments.
Mary Beckman, District Three. I, I hate to have to do this, but we were far from the highest turnout. The overall turnout, according to the Secretary of State's Election Data Hub turnout site, the overall turnout was 2.8%. And in, in just the neighboring counties, the county that had the highest turnout was McIntosh with 4.3, and then Chatham with 3.3, and, and then Liberty with 2.5, Brunswick, sorry, Glen with 2.3. And so we were of the coastal counties, we were second lowest turnout. Only Bryan County had a lower turnout. We will, we will try to do better in November, I promise.
Thank you, Dr. Beckman. Is there anything else from anyone? Ms. Shannon?
I'll just say one last thing. We did have a lot of support from the NAACP and the GOP groups pushing out the dates for us and reminding even people at Bulldog Club meetings that, hey, there's an election going on. It was in the paper a couple of times, plus the Coastal Shopper had it in there. The, the shopper, it was there twice at least, and, and they have a lot of readership. Lighthouse Radio did a couple of broadcasts with me. So aside from like billboards or more maybe groups that we have, like Rotary's, Lions Club, Kiwanis, getting the information to them, we, maybe we can brainstorm on some other things during the work session to get, get the word out.
Thank you. And I think that you all do a great job as far as trying to get the word out, all the different organizations as well. Like you said, just kind of ponder around and see what we can do to make it better. But right now, I believe we're doing a great job in what we do is trying to educate the, the citizens in the community. All righty. If there's nothing else, I'm going to get a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion in second to adjourn our meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.